This conference will now be recorded.
All right, this special board meeting of the South Quibi Parks and Recreation District is called to order at 4:01 PM on June 1st, 2023. Is there anyone for public comment? Having no one for public comment, we will move on to the staffing memo. Did everyone have a chance to review the memo?
Yes.
All right. Carrie, can you lead us through the charts and memo? Okay, so yeah, we're here to discuss some options now that hiring process is all paused, whatever you want to say. So what we're wanting to discuss is hiring additional temporary staff to keep the district moving during this transition time, whether it be an interim director or interim business manager or other. Hiring help for recreation, which we hope to continue in the budget for the future, and anything relative to the executive director search. This is not an intended executive session. So we had discussed some items about if we're hiring an interim person, whether they, you know, what benefits we need to pay a temporary employee. And so I got some guidance about that. And so the summary that I can tell is for the most part is that there are sort of tax-related, like paid family medical leave, Washington care.
Carrie, could you move closer to the microphone? I'm hearing a real echo.
So aside from things that are like state or legally mandated, things like paid family medical leave, payroll taxes, of course, unemployment, L and I, we don't need to, as best I can tell, pay benefits such as dental, medical, retirement. I'm still getting some information about retirement here, but it looks like we can forego those items if it's for a temporary employee. The other question was for hiring an interim or temporary person, do we need to post it as a regular job as we normally do? And from what I believe, we do not have to do that for this kind of situation for a temporary. And from what I generally saw, the temporary was usually defined as, you know, six months at the most. So that's that.
And that, you thought that was for sure, like on the retirement?
I am double checking on that with them, but it sounds like
I thought I said something about unless they were part of PERS.
I thought I said.
Oh, okay, let me see.
And when I, a decade ago, I was a seasonal employee with Valvi with me. I don't know if they opted to or if they had to, but they put me in the PERS system as a seasonal.
Okay. Well, and right now I'm working with VRS for that audit that I mentioned to you guys, I think I did mention it. Anyways, so I will get clarification on that.
Could you, Carrie has been bouncing around a little bit. Could you, are we talking about the job posting thing now? Are we talking about the benefits part or both?
That part was discussing benefits, that we, whether we need to provide those items for temporary employees.
So could you reiterate, like what was the final conclusion?
On which part?
Like the question of benefits for a temporary employee.
Okay, so here we go. So there is still some uncertainty about PERS, the retirement. And if we do have to include paid sick leave, we do have to include unemployment, payroll taxes, all of those. So what's uncertain is retirement. It does not sound like we need to provide medical or dental benefits.
So could you go back to that part of the, I'm just having trouble following the screen, actually.
I'm sorry, it's opposite my pad and so it's going backwards. So what part are you wanting to know about?
Yeah, so that, just that list of benefits, can you just again summarize what we, what is going to be due to a temporary employee and what will not? While staying on this, so I can follow it.
Okay, okay. We still have to pay payroll taxes, Washington care, unemployment, paid family medical leave, sick leave, what looks like domestic violence leave. What we don't know is PERS retirement, whether we have to provide that if they're already in the plan or not. Thank you.
Okay, and then medical and dental?
And we do not have to provide those.
Okay, all right, I think I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly where we're at with PERS part. Okay, yeah, I have questions to the VRS. So I don't have to post it. We don't have to post an interim position such as that. So we can just appoint whoever that is. So we have someone trusted from the community that we want to put forth if we want, right, so it's, do we have an interim director that we can appoint? Do we want to empower Carrie to be that and have someone to be the business manager? So you were going to ponder. So I still, I still don't know. Okay, ultimately for me, and I think for the district, it would be best if we didn't have basically two interim positions. Being if I were the interim director and somebody else were an interim business manager. That's a lot of interim, a lot of people that are having to learn new positions. That said, for a time, I could do the interim director position, provided that we're able to get a really solid person in the business manager role. I contacted the state auditor about our audit, which would be this fall. But I don't want to get into it, it's a situation where I'm still having to do heavily both roles. And so I asked them whether the audit could be postponed to the end of this period, whatever it is, six months or less. And she said that yes, they could put it towards, you know, late November, early December. And she said that in some cases, we could actually put it off another year and do a three-year audit. I'm not sure that that would be good for working for the bond. So I would refer that to you.
Well, but I mean, the interim, to me, the interim director idea is the most important for that. And I mean, I personally like the idea of what you're proposing as a, as a way to do the interim fill in a meaningful way.
You're saying me filling that role?
Yeah, like where you're talking, I mean, the way I understood it, you're proposing you fill the interim director role and then we backfill with an interim business manager role with the primary focus on somebody who can carry us through this fourth quarter audit.
Yeah. Yeah, my personal preference, I would like to just continue in my current role and catch up if there was a good interim director position. So, or candidate for that role, that would be my preference. If there was somebody that was going to be solid, knowledgeable, trustworthy for that role, that would be my preference so that I can just continue where I am and catch up.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Krista, your answer is up there.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if, if we, if we did that and you remained in your role, when would we be doing that audit?
I would probably target October, maybe early November. They said if they do it for health leave, it would take a few weeks. Which is what they did last night, and that's about that here. Matt, at the end of the last audit, I know we talked a little bit about them coming and they kind of had definitely sounded like they wouldn't commit to that. Didn't you get that feeling like they were probably looking towards a lot of remote audits still? Matt, are you there? Anyways.
So that kind of changes the dynamics. And I told Carrie that you'd rather retain the business manager position and not step into that role if possible. The question then becomes, do we have likely candidates, somebody who can do that particular job? It's a big question that I have.
Yeah, and you know, part of that preference is due to, I know how much I'm still going to be in touch with some business manager stuff. So I feel like I'm still, you know, boundaries are becoming very blurred. And so I know that as the director, I'm doing some of the business manager things that are bigger picture stuff like the budget and the, you know, I need to know the process.
I also think your point about having a lot of interims may not be the best for the district overall.
But Carrie's interim, but it's a moot point because you're gonna, you're gonna have interim business manager whether you want it or not. So that's why I said, really the question is then, you know, do we have likely candidates? Somebody who has retired, a resource, same question I asked last week about, you know, we have pools in the education support that we can go through. Is there something like that, with retired park and rec director type positions where you have access to your knowledge?
I don't know. But I have a lot of time to explore that. I've been thinking more like, you know, who do I have?
And with that, just a question for everybody. Do we feel like it would need to be somebody who is familiar with this district and part of this community? Or could this be somebody who worked elsewhere remotely? I don't know, I'm just asking.
I would think that if someone in a similar role who had experienced similar responsibilities, I think they would be like, I don't think they have to know our community necessarily. And they don't have to be, you know, dialed into a RUT or a lot of things like that. It's the project management part, you know, handling all these projects.
I keep going to that retirement place, you know, people, that's full of people who have a, you know, myriad of qualifications. And if we put it out in that kind of format, you might find somebody who is once again not looking for a permanent job, free, willing to step in and try something for the benefit of the whole. So, and I don't, I don't know that, I'm just, I'm just thinking that we're, we're going through the executive director search and having a hard time finding all my candidates. So in terms of finding that perfect person, you know, it's probably not going to happen. But a retired person, if at least is knowledgeable in those areas, would be extremely beneficial.
This guy is one of the people, Paul guy, he's a parks guy.
Paul?
Paul Stokie. Who?
Paul Stokie.
He was, he's a retired parks guy. And he's always asked me, just about the system with parks, because I mean, it's just like, I don't know what role was there, but.
And I believe Paul had been one of the people that was interviewed, like whatever, to be one of the commissioners. I believe he was filling that position. Maybe it was when Mark left, Mark Halbinstell. So I don't know, Matt, if that rings a bell with you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just still having trouble hearing. So who are we talking about?
Paul Stokie, who, he's one of the pickleball guys. But he also was interviewing or applying for the position, I think, to fill Mark Halbinstell's spot on the board.
Oh, yeah, I don't, don't know.
Unless I was interviewing, but Dawn and I were the other two.
I don't see a lot of this here right now. Yeah. Yeah. I think he didn't look a lot of golf course maintenance projects with the public courses involved.
Yeah, it was mostly, yeah, the parks side of things, the, yeah.
And we're hoping this potential person can take over all the different committee projects that we have going on? Or are we trying to give him the full load or lighten the load? I don't know if you guys have talked about yet what we would look for as a director, what specifically.
I think just the day-to-day business at hand, you know, that wherever we're at in this process. So the most pertinent things being probably the campground, the pool, make sure I got that stuff in the criteria.
Yeah, keeping everything, yeah, I mean, whatever, I would be looking for them to do whatever the director.
And pickleball, the pickleball courts that
Yeah.
starting that project. I, I think we need somebody who can run projects, who is organized in that sense.
I thought the same thing in terms of, you know, maybe not so much you have to look for the park and rec. Project manager position, but more project manager, because you're gonna have a bigger applicant pool. You're gonna have more people that have done that kind of work. And I think it'd be easier to obtain that type of person. But that's just my thought on, in terms of, nobody's throwing out names. If we've got one name and we've done an executive director search, that tells me that it's not an easy process just to go, hey, we've got somebody waiting in the wings.
I think we have a resource of a lot of user groups that we haven't approached. Because there are a lot of, like you said, there's a lot of retired people who've made this experience. But it's having to go out there to all of them and say like, hey, do you guys know anybody around here? More so, because right now, like none of them, like they knew we were looking for an executive director, but that wasn't anything that was a compliment to any of them, because.
Yeah. So we need to write an ask, a community ask letter?
So I guess, I guess, again, if we're back to my preferences, expedience is my preference too.
Yeah.
If it's starting the process, I mean, I appreciate all of that and I think that's a good plausible way to go. But if it's.
Well, I mean, I mean, didn't we, didn't we say like last meeting that we were bandwidth limited and looking at packages for like long-term executive director solutions? To me, I think vetting candidates like this is going to take us even more time than that. I just don't, do not see us having an ability to vet candidates and select one with any degree of rigor. That's gonna do, serve us better than, and I know what your personal preference is, Carrie, but it's gonna serve us better than Carrie. There's no way. Unless we say our goal is November or something like that. Where do we get additional bandwidth to do this? I don't, I just don't see it.
Yeah.
I would agree, but I don't want to put that on Carrie.
I feel like that pressures Carrie.
Well, I mean, it's would have been, you know, thinking about in the past week or two, whatever it could have been, is, you know, the realities, you know. Okay, what's, what's worse, you know, the things I was concerned about. Being the director, I don't really know the things that job description is not mean necessarily. But I'm concerned about the audit, so that's kind of alleviated in some way if we're wrapping it up. I was concerned about the triathlon and just the small thing with the director in debt, that's all it was valuable. In running the intersection in line, I don't feel like I can do that right now and catch up on some of the business manager stuff. And just the general, yeah, the blurring of my, so, yeah. But then the idea of prolonging by having to do another search, I will have to do that with the business managers.
I don't see that interim search being quite as extensive though. You're just looking for someone who short-term, field boy.
Yeah.
Those criteria can be fairly simple, like Krista was.
Well, but this is like, this is face of the district stuff, right? This is outward facing to all these stakeholder organizations, to citizens, community members. I want to spend more time with this person rather than say, oh, yeah, okay, good enough.
Do they need to fill that role? Maybe not.
Well, they will. I mean, by definition, they will. Like when we, if we say, if we say like, we're gonna go to the port district to update them on, on our bond timing, on our plan, we're gonna talk to the school district about campground, we're gonna do, you know, whatever. We're in what the, the director's gonna be the one expected to be on point.
Yeah, I forgot, that was, the bond was another thing that I was concerned about. And if it were gonna be this November, I I wouldn't want to be that person. If it were going to be April, that, that means it'll be somebody else's function. In the future. But trying to squeeze the bond in as interim director.
We need to keep that off the table. That's not part of our discussion today. I mean, I, as a task on your list, yes, getting into the discussion of it.
And I hope that we have a director hired by that point, you know, or at least in the process of it. I wouldn't want to lay a cast.
Well, and that's a, and that's, Eric, that's a great point. Like, if we're talking about pouring resources into evaluating director candidates, interim or otherwise, I'd much rather spend my time on looking at candidates who would be long-term, potentially not a three-month or a six-month holdover. Because we're gonna have to do it again, right?
So Carrie, you have, I'm not going to name names, but you have reached out to someone about being interim business manager. So I haven't had time to follow up with that, to get more information.
Well, part of this, I don't know, it seems like, once again, I don't want to put on Carrie. Carrie's, Carrie's opening statements change the dynamics, I think, of the discussion. But I would say, what if we were to put it out there and whatever format we decide with a, you know, and I don't, I don't necessarily know that that executive director has to do every duty that we expect an executive director to do. We're just, most interim positions I know of, they're not doing everything. They're just, they're just keeping the ship afloat.
Exactly.
And I think that's what Carrie wants. She wants support, she wants somebody there that will take on the task so she can do the business at hand. But with that in mind, an approach might be that we put something out there to the groups that we're talking about locally and see if that person exists. If not, that changes our, that changes our scope completely. If there's not someone stepping up, then it doesn't really need to be a discussion. But we don't know that. I just can't believe in our community of just so many retired engineers, project managers, that there isn't someone that might go, hey, I'd be interested in this, you know, I'd be interested in helping out. So that's, that's my thought, is at least give that a run before we go to the next step, which is the fallback might be Carrie, you know, that we end up hiring a different manager.
Well, we had, we had 25, I mean, I, and I get like the interest, I mean, maybe we have 20 people who are interested. I would hope we have a lot, but then we gotta evaluate all those people. Like it's not just interest, we had 20 candidates for our executive director position. Out of 20, we only picked one that we all would agree we would even hire out of 20.
Yeah, my, my, it would be follow Carrie, Carrie last week suggested, or last time we met, that we simplify the process a bit with maybe two people taking on the role of hiring, you know, with the entrusted ability that they're gonna hire someone who, you know, meets the qualifications, the simplistic qualifications that we've got. That's more the way I saw it. I didn't see it as we have to reconvene and go through that hiring process.
Right, right, but it, but take, take the, if you took our old, the process we did the last time, like the simplistic part I thought was the end. I mean, simple, sorry, the simple part was the end. The first part was the applications and the projects and presentations and all that kind of stuff. So I would say we just take, we take all that out and we just do the end part. But like in the last process, it was the end part that made the difference, right? I mean, we all had high rankings for various people through the hard part. And then in the end, it was the simple part that screened everybody but one. So I would think we could skip the hard part and just do the simple part because that's how we screened those other four, five, or six high-ranked candidates in the last round.
So we had talked about doing a reach out to some identified past commissioners. You brought up the idea of within our user groups, okay? So is it a personal reach? Is it a personal reach in conjunction with some sort of a casual community ask via our website? Via?
Email.
Email to our list?
Yeah, what if, you know, if we did it, what if we just put a very, very short timeline on it? I mean, like, make it an effort over the next couple of weeks, over the next four.
Yeah, so.
And you make a.
Two weeks is, you have time.
Yeah.
Ten days.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, I don't, I don't think we need like whole application and a process.
I think you can have a written description of the duties that will entail. And, you know, we kind of have talked about that more towards the project, right? More towards the project management. I would go that direction just because I think you're gonna, you're more likely to capture somebody who wants to do that. If you leave it open to executive director, it becomes ambiguous. And I think a person's gonna go, I don't know if I'm really qualified for that. But if you put project manager on there, you know, and you kind of say, these are just things that we need you to do, there's people that I think will step up to that.
Oh, so my concern then is that if that remains all the other tasks, that.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, those are, those are the minor tasks, I would think. I mean, not, not that they're simple, they're, they're, they're small in the grand scheme, right, Carrie?
Maybe the projects.
I mean, what percentage of your week do you spend on those?
We learn about what functions are the business managers and which are the executive directors. I would say that I probably dedicated about, I don't know, two, three hours a day towards the executive director type of stuff. Mostly in those projects, more preparing for board meetings.
So I would defer to your expertise and then say, you know, criteria being rankable. I mean, go ahead and put, what are the priorities that you need right now? I mean, that, you see it more than anyone else does. That to me seems like a valuable way to approach it. And what's low on that list may not get hit, but the biggies start there. I don't know what those are necessarily, but I know you do, because you're seeing it day to day. So start with the tasks that you know don't involve your business management side and the upcoming audit and more than that. That seems like a logical approach. And then you're gonna get to a point there where you go, okay, it's. And then you're, you're going to get to a point there where you go, okay, it's what a person, you know, is qualified to do.
So one of the things that I see is we need somebody that's used to governmental operation. And we, we just started talking, I'm trying to secure bids on certain things. So we started looking at the threshold. We, we were right at the threshold of need, you go out, we're going to have bid and audit and all that type of stuff. That's something with direct folks handles. So a lot of our capital projects are going to be taken into here. Some of the stuff, it's, it's that type of stuff that neither one of us has really ever done. That's always been on the director's plate, so.
Yeah, that seems like that's top of the list.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, trying, trying to get, you know, pricing on some of this stuff and actually put together our packets and that type of stuff for, for these larger capital projects, that's, that's going to start ramping up here real quick. So to me, that, that's my biggest need for an executive director. I think we could handle it. It's just a lot of time digging through.
Learn, but it is a learning.
So.
Okay, so I'm starting to keep a bit of a list. Let me see if we can just, before we add more, let me see if I have this right. So I would think prepping for, for board meetings is taking quite a bit of time. And having somebody to do that, or, or at least three quarters of that would be one of the functions, right? Two, the park projects. So again, campground. Helping with the aquatic center and those meetings and keeping that moving forward as well as probably pickleball courts that are coming up due to grants, right? Event support as needed. Because we, there are a lot of park events coming up in the next six months. Governmental operations, so talking to the county, talking to the state, doing that kind of correspondence, correct?
Oh, a whole lot of that exactly. It's more like part of it, like doing projects is making sure, you know, that we're doing things like paying prevailing wages, making sure we're doing the competitive bid process.
Okay, great. So bid requests.
Government stuff a lot. And it's understanding of all the little, you know, little tedium things that we have to do because we're government.
Okay, okay, got it. That's how that fits in. Okay. Have I missed anything so far?
Yeah.
Well, that would be part of, part of projects. Yeah, okay. Okay.
The, the, the day-to-day stuff like, you know, being present to, so that we can, we don't have to close the office as much, you know, just being an extra person here, but.
Answering calls and stuff like that.
That required a signature from a contractor.
How many meetings are you attending that would normally be an ED?
I could, I would maybe average two, three a week, something like that. So meeting, yeah. They usually relate to all those other things that we've listed. And, you know, some of the board meeting preparation will hopefully go down anyways because.
But, but I would put it out there that attending meetings and gathering information and taking notes is very different from being the public face of the district.
Right, I agree.
Yes, 100% agree.
Also, then also the financial things. So they should be a part of the budgeting conference. I don't know if that. I mean, they just might end up, no matter what, there's going to be some stuff to prepare the bond.
Have we talked to potentially also opening the permanent director as continuous and reviewing core, any new applicants that we think are worthwhile in conjunction with potential tent? I don't know if that would be.
You, you mean, you mean like the interim having the possibility of becoming a permanent director or something?
Uh, that too, not specifically, but like in conjunction, like also reopening the director position. And just as continuous versus like that closing on June 30th or something like that. But continuous, we will review application. We could pick specific dates or we could just leave it as continuous separately, maybe the WRP and RPA. And then locally, we put out a, whether we call it a project manager or an interim director, whatever we want to call it. And we could also do that if, if the candidate wants, you know, it could be longer than six months. Could be potential for permanent, uh, potential for a permanent decision.
Yeah, I mean, I, I 100% agree with that, Jake. That, that, like I, I'm thinking about the idea of spending time on evaluating director candidates. I'd rather be spending time evaluating long-term candidates from the full application process than doing it twice.
Yeah, I'm just thinking long-term, but I mean, also, you know, everyone needs a director, manager, project manager now, yesterday. But if we get someone who doesn't want to have it full-time, we can help steer the ship for the next three, six, 12 months while we have an ongoing bank of permanent director applications building and then look at that middle of summer, end of summer.
That was part of the discussion, Jake, is that the bandwidth isn't there.
Right.
It's the height of Krista's business, it's the height of my business. And so we were talking that September, October is, October is more realistic for evaluating for a true ED. So are you more familiar with the, the board process, that posting board process? I, I don't know what that looks like to us if we leave it open continuous and say, oh, and by the way, we're not going to be evaluating anyone until October. I don't, what does that do to the research pool? I, I don't know.
Yeah, and good question. I, I've seen it. USA Jobs is notorious, I feel like, for having that. USA GovJobs, whatever, they have, or if you look at like civilian sector of the Navy or something, they have these jobs that are posted last year. And I don't, I'm not going to pretend like I know how often they review them. I know some will say, um, will review on a continuous basis. Some are just like last open. So, I mean, if I need a job right now, that, that wouldn't be as attractive as, we're going to review it in two weeks from now. So I don't know what that does to the, to answer your question.
It's just my mind, closing it would be a better move because when you leave it open, you're just sending a statement to your, just hoping somebody wants your job. I mean, honestly, that's the way, you know, and, and just to your point, you know, people will look at it. And I've been mad, I look at that job, it's the same job, it's open all the time. Okay, there's a reason that job's open. I think we'd better offer closed position and restart this process, you know.
Yes. And we, can, can we agree that that's what we're trying to do? Because we've talked about this specific issue several times now. So can we agree that we're tabling it?
I couldn't, couldn't hear you, Jen. What did you say?
Can we just agree that we're going to table looking for a permanent ED until, can Krista, you helped me here, what, September, October?
Yeah, I think if we can just get a, get through June and July, I'd say by the, the end of August, I could, I could start to, like by then, have some time to, well, we're going to need to redo, I think, the description. I think that needs to be looked at again. So we need to do a review on that description and have that go out. Maybe if we can get that out at the end of August, beginning of September, that would be great. And then we can, yeah, start to, uh, applications, yeah, September.
Yeah, for me, that's a lot better. That August, September time right there is horrible for me.
Right, and I, and my only input then is if we do not have the bandwidth to do this until September, we shouldn't think that we can get through a temporary candidate in that same window. Because we're not going to be able to dedicate enough time to pick the right person. So I would say let's focus on the business development.
Process. This is people that, that, right, I mean, we're, we're talking less than six degrees of separation here. This is going to be someone from within the community that we already know, like and trust. This is a tap.
Truceless could be an avenue to, they have to help one in job sex. That's a simple one.
Yeah, I, I also feel like hiring a temporary person is a different decision and a different process than trying to hire a long-term executive candidate.
Right, as you said a few, as you said several minutes ago, Matt, we're skipping to the end. We're not doing this whole in-depth, uh, job application, huge resume, huge project. As you said, we are jumping to the end, to the conversation. This is what we need. Are you interested in playing? It's a short term.
Right, right, but we also said that this could be up to a year, right?
Uh, what I was hearing, um, what Carrie said when she reached out to MSR, was it MSRC? Is that a temporary position is roughly six months. We could probably be pushing it if we wanted to go out to nine, but yeah, we're not looking for a year. Yeah, we're not looking for a year.
But when did we, when did we post the ED position?
January.
And then when did, when did we, when did we finally wrap up the, the Brian? The Brian situation. So that was February, March, April, May, June. So four months, it took us four months to get to that one. So if we start in October, that's October, November, December, January. So we'd be at the Brian final stage in sometime in the end of January. But if we say the holiday in December is going to mess things up, say it's February. So optimistically, we're talking, if we hire somebody temporarily in June, that's July, August, September, October, November, December, January, February, that's eight months. And that's if everything goes perfectly the second time around.
And in discussions of going through the post-mortem from the first go-round, I believe that we are all smarter and I believe that we will all be more efficient. I don't think that we will need to spend so much time going around trees many times. I think we can move through this process the second time more efficiently.
Just counting, counting back on the months, six months to me seems adequate. And I would even say six months or less, you know, even though, that's, that's quite a ways out. If we were to hire someone in, say, July, July, just say as a date, July 1st. I mean, yeah, it'd be great. I'm just saying, even if you went July, if you go out six months from that, that's a long time. We should, I, we would not be doing justice if we don't have somebody hired by then. So I think that could be written into that job description. A person knows that it's a temporary position ahead of time. And they probably want that temporary position. That's why they, that's why they're applying.
Yeah.
Would you all want to have the cabinet at the end that says temporary position, big bold letters, very small print at the bottom, potential for a full-time or not that.
I can't imagine that this temporary person is going to have the skillset that we need, right? Someone that would have the donations that we need. And, right, or, or we, excuse me, we're a retiree community. That person out there is someone who's like, I, I want to do something good, I want to be in the community. Not looking for a new job, not looking for a new career.
And if for some reason they, they do turn out to be wonderful and they changed their minds and they want to come out of retirement and they're doing an amazing job and the entire organization staff and commissioners are all like, this is fantastic. They can say something and we can reconsider.
I just don't want to put it out there that way. I think that, I think that would limit us.
It limits and it's not fair to go against as well.
Okay, so how do we implement this community ask?
Well, I, I, I still, I still, my feeling is we should focus on the interim business development manager. Why, why have we taken that completely off the table?
Carrie's decision.
I, I think it's the Plan B at this point. If, if, if within two weeks, we're not able to find a one person in this community who wants to step up and, and, and get us through as, as an interim executive director, and we're really just striking out completely, then, then that would be our Plan B. But from what Carrie is expressing pretty clearly, that's her preference.
Yeah, if, it's my preference if it comes together. If, if it does not, then I'd have preference to switch roles for a time. And again, that also relies on finding a person to replace, right?
But you can have both going on simultaneously too. It's not going to make a difference. Well, I guess, I was going to say, it would be nice to have a heads-up. At least put feelers out, who, who are those people, potential business managers?
Yeah.
Right, and it just seems like a much less daunting task to do that with a high degree of rigor than do, take the alternate path. And I, I think it's upon us to, to make a best decision for the district. Understanding, I appreciate Carrie's input and I, I've heard both of what you, Carrie, you just said. I think we, I, I'm trying to step back and say, what's the best for the district with all these things considered? And it seems like we can much more quickly and with a much higher degree of confidence go down the path of a backfill for the business manager function because we have people in play. And the, the scope of customer-facing, community-facing activity is not, not as broad. And it is if we launch into a temporary director search, in two weeks, we get 10 candidates. Now we got to vet them, interview them, become comfortable with them, you know, rank and stack and stack them, do second interviews, you know, come to a decision.
Matt, we're looking to date someone. We're not looking to marry someone. So I, let's not overanalyze.
That sells, that sells the communities. I mean, that sells the community, right? We have a, the district has an outward face to the community. Like we can't, it's, this is, this is a, this is an important position, right?
It, it is, and I, I actually, I think that, um, that the, that the district will understand. I think it's logical. They're like, look, they tried to find an executive director. They were unsuccessful and therefore they want to find somebody just as an interim, as, as a temporary to take on some of the activities. I think that the district, the public will see that as a very common sense step. I think that for, you know, that going directly to Plan B, I think is a little convoluted.
Well, but the, from a continuity standpoint, take, take the interfaces that we talked about, like with the county, with the state, with the J Brennan, with ARC, with community stakeholders, soccer club, all these things. In terms of continuity, the continuity we've established just over the last few months is Carrie and Sky have stepped up with Tom. And, you know, the, 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 you know, the drumbeat has maintained through this period, even though there's been turmoil in it. And if we maintain that. maintain that in the, in the alternate example where Carrie is the interim, our continuity is, is good, I would say. With all those stakeholders and all those, all that interface, if we take the alternate path and we put in a temporary person for six months, that person's got to form all these relationships with full knowledge that in six months, it's going to be a different person forming all those relationships. So it seems like that, that kind of staccato approach to these key things, like relationship with the school and with the Port District and with the public over the bond and with soccer club and with, you know, vendors for the pickleball and all, you know, those kind of things. It seems like continuity has a higher order of importance than than other things.
I feel like you're ignoring what Carrie's saying, which is what we would ask for anybody in, like, when we're trying to find them next. Hey, we need an interim director. And that person could say, I mean, if you can't find anybody else, then yeah, maybe I'll do that. And that's what she's saying right now. And instead, you're saying like, no, Carrie, you're doing it. Like, that's what it sounds like. Instead of, okay, well, let's see if we find somebody that really wants this right now. Because she's saying she, she will if that's what it has to come down to, but I think going and checking the community would, would be a good idea if that's what she's asking, because because I'm.
No, I, I get it. I appreciate that. I am hearing what Carrie said on both sides, right? There's prior, first choice, second choice. And I'm saying in my evaluation, my personal opinion, the first choice is not optimal. The second choice is better. So it's not that, it's none of Carrie's choices or thoughts, it's the second one in order. I get that it's not the first choice. But I think the community is better served if we take Carrie's second choice. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. We're going to continue this later in the discussion. I just want to make sure that we don't forget, there are some other hiring things that we want to discuss.
So I think we left out the order, get the order out. How do we, how do we get this out to the masses that we want?
So, Sky had a great idea. We've already got a database of all of user groups. So email can go out, we can put something on the website. Drew's List, great idea, community-centered. And then we all need to think, and we need to make some phone calls to people that we think and just start putting it out there. Not unlike what we've had to do in the past when we're trying to find new commissioners, put on your thinking caps. Who can we talk, who can we talk to? And if it isn't that person, do they know?
I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. I was just, yes, you may, we have some kind of strategy heading forward.
Okay. Um, who's going to reach out? Are they each person individually in order? Um, how do we not commit ourselves to things?
Um, so I think we need a little, maybe a little paragraph of some of the activities that sort of we need to add. We're all saying the same thing, so um, let me work on this paragraph and I can probably give it out by the end of day tomorrow.
Okay.
You're talking about like a one-page job description?
Not even one page.
Well, I was just going to, I was just going to suggest that, uh, once again, have Carrie be part of that discussion, prioritize those topics.
Yeah, absolutely. So I will come up with a, a draft, literally, paragraph. Very, very brief. Um, bullet points. We'll pass it to, to you, both of you. Do a final check on it, make any changes that you see fit, and then hit send. And then send it back to all of us so that we have something that we can use to take to any contacts that we, that we know. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be awesome. Staff want to prioritize what we're looking for recently. To me, projects all sound great, but we need to keep our shit close, so we have, so what, what do we do? What's going to happen here first? And then once they can do that, those roles, capital project bids, whatnot.
Okay, so let's leave it to, um, Krista and Carrie to get that brainstormed out and then we'll be back back into our hands, Jim. Back into our hands, right?
Late tomorrow.
Late tomorrow.
Yeah, back into the board's hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will, we will have our paragraph, we will have our talking points, given email.
Should we set a date, uh, in terms of?
Two weeks, right? Two weeks, two weeks from tomorrow.
When I say that, I mean, an actual date, so we go two weeks out.
Let's say two weeks from today because then we can pull together and board-related, board meeting-related.
Yeah, got it. Right, because I need, okay.
All right, as I qualify as a decision, then I need a motion and all.
And what is June 15th?
Two weeks to gather people.
Some options.
To fill out a community and hopefully have a couple names.
Two weeks to see an actual list of who we compile, who we come up with.
Because if I have a option, then entertain a motion. This is strictly for item number one on that one.
A question, um, do we just want like a, a written statement? What, how do we want them to contact us? What do we want them to say?
Back through the letter of interest.
A letter of interest.
Short letter of interest. Maybe brief experience.
Yep.
So I will make a motion that, uh, we put out feelers for the next two weeks to try to find a, a interim executive director to which we'll revisit that their next, uh, board meeting, press, time to that. So it'd be the, it'd be the July board meeting, June, June board meeting. Yeah, okay.
Do you read the board?
Did you say temporary? Yes, yeah, interim, or interim, yeah, gotcha.
I'll second that.
Um, we need to restate that. Yeah, um, it's, I'm starting here. So, mostly, you noodle on it, so now give me a succinct action statement.
So I will make a motion that we're reaching out to the community within the next two weeks to find interim director, a potential interest interim director. That's it.
Now I'll second that.
All right, and it's been moved and seconded that the board will reach out to the community by June 15th to locate an interim director. All those in favor say aye.
Eric aye.
Krista aye.
Jake aye.
Jennifer aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Aye, nay.
The ayes have it and the motion passes. All right, moving on, do you want me to answer it? Okay, moving on to item number two on the memo, hiring help for recreation. This would be Sky.
Yes. Um, sorry, I probably didn't bring the Okay, so so it is tracking where we are at, we want to call it director savings, but, uh, basically the cost savings from not having a director in play, um, and their related benefits and such versus, uh, some additional expenses that have been incurred um, for the same time period and what the net result is. So uh, so right now I'm estimating three and a half months without an executive director at this point. And I put in some factors whether, um, we would hire a new director at a different salary, um, whether that's interim or whatever, but I was estimating for, um, a interim, so six months of savings at a lesser rate. And the lesser rate was the beginning level of the director wages. So I put it at step A, just as a filling point. And so what would that savings be from that? So that would result in a savings of uh, fifteen thousand. Um, if we also hired an interim business manager, I estimated what that would be as well. And that was also looking at step A for the business manager wages, so none of those may be true. Um, and then the additional expenses that we've discussed are some of these things may go away, depending on what scenario we end up with in the interim, but um, the one I want to highlight is, uh, recreation assistant. And we estimated that at seventy-five hundred. And I want to be clear that this is above and beyond some funds that were already designated for some help um, in the budget. Um, so, but those items have been lumped in with, say, basket, basketball budget line expenses or pickleball, that sort of thing. So those have been lumped in there. So this is above and beyond that, and I think the total then would be uh, fifteen thousand if you include that. So this is part-time help. This is for approximately the rest of the year. Um, I want to describe some of the things this person would do.
It could be a lot of the drop in sports, but the basketball coordination, be lots of gym opening, preparedness, um, dealing with all the other monies that come in from pickleball sessions, volleyball sessions, basketball, the basketball starts this week, yeah, foots old one starts in October. Um, and then also to add option of just like the, the weeks in, uh, in gym, in July with the uh, triathlon, being able to boost and have somebody that can help assign to more, some of the more mundane tasks of like, hey, we need some signs put up. Because then that's, it's harder than that because you can get one person to do it, but then at the end of all, to say, take the signs down, you have to have that same person. So it usually ends up being the coordinator who on that last day is driving around, just picking up signs everywhere. Like little pieces of help within there. Uh, being able to get just like some simple rosters, email sent out anytime we have a new camp that is set up. Um, and then the other big thing would just be like being able to help with, uh, social media.
What, is there a computer that you can use? Is there a desk?
We have an extra laptop.
You have an extra laptop. I have an extra desk that's next to my desk.
Just wondering, do, do we have, do we have the, what we need to equip this person to do those things?
Yeah.
So prior to COVID, this may be before Sky then, the, did you hire someone every summer to help? Being most of the time you have a lot of. No, I'm asking, did you?
And I'm telling you, it's a touchy subject, no.
But way back, yes. But you requested, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
You didn't, right?
No.
Okay. I'm not saying you didn't deserve it, I just.
Right.
Whether or not that was something that's always, in my mind, it seems like summer activities kick in and that's a great time to have an extra body, just like maintenance.
So are we looking for, is this, um, a stellar class of twenty twenty-three high school graduate? Is this someone home from college? Is this?
Yeah.
That, that works fine. I mean, ideally, if you had somebody
Long-term, yeah.
that was in a long term where they're not taking off halfway through August, because there's also just the pieces of life. Anybody wants to take some time off over the summer, having a backup that can actually cover some of it, so. With some of those, you're, you know, beginning August, people are taking off.
Okay.
But also just yet to have that extra back. I mean, having somebody where you're not having to be trained all the time. I mean, I, I can envision there also might be some people that are just.
So this is a permanent position, not a temporary position?
I would like it to be.
I, I think, yeah, I think it's going to be probably starting at a temporary your approving kind of a temporary budget expenditure.
For twenty twenty.
Right. I think we will have a bigger ask for twenty-three that is more permanent.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay.
Is it twenty hours a week, forty hours a week, whatever you can get?
I, I put ten to fifteen hours a week for now.
Okay.
Ten to fifteen?
Ten to fifteen, but that's, uh, I mean, that, that's flexible depending on wage.
And so that relates to the other piece of paper that you have in front of you.
Steps, okay.
So Matt, you see, okay. So this is our salary for this year, salary scale. Um, I've crossed out, it turns out a good deal of our salary scale is not legal anymore. Because it's below minimum wage. So this is where, um, we have identified that we would have our closers, our seasonal maintenance. A position like this, we don't have in our compensation stack. So, and we are, I've also gotten zero applications for the seasonal position, which is in that, indicated by that green spot.
Two years ago. Wow.
So, I, you know, where it would be logically, maybe putting them at step A, I think we need to consider bypassing some lower steps and going to another level, so, but still within that ask of seventy-five hundred. And still, I think for Tom's position, if we revise the wages, we're looking at less time anyways because nobody's applying, so we can still make it work if we increase that hourly wage. So down here I have the hourly wages that's at the bottom of your form. There's a gap.
Ours, our, our printout don't have row twenty-three to twenty-three. Oh, you don't have row twenty-three? No, no.
What, what is it now, Tom? What's hourly?
Sixteen eighty-five is where we advertised. It should be higher.
Yeah, but, I mean, we.
But I would like it for me.
Maybe all courses, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, that's where their summer guys now, it's.
That's useless, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like seventeen-year-old eating big twenty bucks to watch shows.
Yeah.
So while we do that, we need to also consider that that means they're stepping ahead of our other maintenance closers. So if we bring everybody in higher, we probably need to bring them up.
Yeah, I'm going to throw something out here, just because this is a real problem here. If I look at the part-time person, I mean, my preference would be sixty-eight months. And like, we're advertising twenty-four hours a week. Sky could use easily the other half of that position. Maybe we look at hiring one full-time position with benefits that is loading tape position. Because in today's world, and I'm just thinking about this now, because we haven't even talked about this, but if you can give somebody medical available, you're going to get somebody that's going to be reliable. They're going to appreciate the job more. I mean, it's, it's the pack, the package that we can offer, but make them a year-round person that we just float between that we just float between two positions. They could also closing, opening, you know, on weekends and stuff like that. Right now we have one closing person, that person says, hey, I got something going on for sure. And, you know, so just maybe not right now, but when we start looking at budgeting, let's maybe think about turning this into a full-time position or share.
I, I like that idea. It makes sense from a, from a full-time benefit position for sure. My only question is, what skills and experience do you need? And what skills and experience do you need? And what is the?
Co-main one.
Co-main, yeah, exactly. Like, what, what are exactly we're really looking for and are we going to be able to find that? And, and I don't know, it's just, it's a genuine question.
I'm just throwing that out because this is two years ago, I bet it's zero now.
Yeah, and Sky and I talked about that a little bit too, as well as also, you know, four years office help. That's not as much of a bigger time commitment, but yeah, it is, it could amount up to a full-time position, but it's hard to, that's a lot of hats to wear.
Like, I could totally see how somebody on your team could, you know, do some of the event stuff and take down signs and do some of that stuff and then go to basketball courts and, you know, take cash. But are they really gonna do social media and do some of that stuff? I, I don't know. I, I really don't know.
Like I said, I'm just throwing that out because at this point, I need someone with this possibly. I mean, where's that? Is it advertised just on our website?
Oh, there was a social media post and just a list, yeah. It was, it was, oh, it was in the newspaper as well.
It was in the newspaper.
Do more definitely. And I think we will.
Why are we doing a groups list for that?
Why aren't we? We did it in the past.
We did it in the past.
And it hasn't yielded anything.
The biggest problem with my job is I can't communicate this to all of us. Ball course, kids that want to do any kind of grounds work, so what does the work really learn? It's a, hey, you're hanging out with two or three of the guys in here. Or, it's not practical, it's, it just isn't, right? I, I don't know. It's, it's tough. So I mean, same thing. You were talking about this a little bit earlier, Carrie, and I'm sitting at this point, I cannot get somewhere else. I have to just hire a full-time guy. Full-time year-round. That's, that's how the job is working for what I have now is that there's two full-times that I try to like nine months. By the time you get, get out of training, you can make some money, he goes off, or, you know, they just come in, you know, and then it was a year or two without getting any help, but we just obviously, you know, we have three full-time guys. Just, you have consistency. And so, I don't know, I mean, there's a solution, but we're just going to have to get it created because it's, it's tough. I mean, the job market on this island is not easy anymore, so.
So the ask is to redirect, to, yeah, redirect director wages into a recreation assistant, some office help, which I may not really hardly need depending on what situations we end up with in a couple of weeks, right? And whether we can just short-circuit some of the steps in our salary band? And whether we should bring up the people that are current employees in that range up to the same level as what we bring, at least the sequel on what I have to. We don't, you know, or we could put the recreation person wherever we want because there is nothing we got in our salary scale.
Carrie, just one clarification, the Korean is symbolizing your original step now, the adjustment made.
Where people are, that is where people currently are, this is the, when we budgeted, this is what we budgeted.
But they would, if we hired someone, for example, it'd be thirty-three, oh, four, one, step A.
Right. Something like that, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
And this is, you're proposing this kind of reconfiguration is for budget year 2024? So all you're asking about is seventy-five hundred for a, for a programs assistant for the balance of 2023, correct?
Yeah, ask is only currently for twenty-three.
So I'd make, I'd make a motion to approve seventy-five hundred for programs assistant for the remainder of 2023.
Let's see it. Would you mind amending that to say beyond what was already budgeted for recreation assistant?
Say again?
Would you amend that to say beyond what was already budgeted for a recreation assistant?
And what was that amount?
I think it was seventy-five hundred. Same figure.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
So I'll amend the motion to say authorize fifteen thousand for a programs assistant for 2023.
I will second that.
So we're calling it programs assistant instead of a recreation assistant? Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve a fifteen thousand dollar budget for a recreation assistant for the balance of 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Eric aye.
Krista aye.
Jake aye.
And aye.
Jennifer aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion's passed. So I'm going to mess it up, mess with the budget a little bit to figure out how to put these ones. I, I see you will be okay with how I decide to implement it into our budget.
Carrie, one more question, we already answered this with that thirty-three, that first step A, is that minimum wage or is it more?
If, if, if it's not crossed out, it should be minimum wage.
If you're saying it wasn't legal, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so all of those that are crossed out.
So thirty-three A and thirty-three oh, four, oh, that's about.
Right, right about it.
Was it about sixteen something?
Fifteen seventy-five.
Eighteen eighty-nine?
Fifteen seventy-five.
Or something like that.
Actually, fifteen seventy-four.
Yeah, let me double check that.
That's just our range is a little. Our step one range was not set on minimum wage, it was just, that's what it was. Fifteen seventy-four.
So that step one in that level, the thirty-three thousand forty-one is equal to.
Is minimum.
Yeah, no, it's at, it's not even not.
Fifteen eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So these are the grade, these are the grade four. Yep, so these are the steps just back for four, so to.
That's, that's.
And if you're a temporary.
If that team out of our things or.
Oh, it's not, it's incredible.
Possessions.
Okay. Is that a contact?
I'm just wondering whether, yeah, I don't know, is this definitely like your wage? I can, was there, I can afford like.
Okay, well, yeah.
Just in how much to like advertise your way.
Yeah, it's, it's completely.
How do you agree?
Do we need to authorize that or do we just find somebody negotiating?
Are, are you okay with me increasing the amount that we budgeted for the rate, I guess, that we budgeted for the seasonal and then also bring up the other people to the same level?
Can you say that again, Carrie? I couldn't hear.
Okay, so for the season, so adjusting the seasonal employee rate up to where it would be like twenty dollars an hour? So bypassing some steps in the salary scale and then increasing accordingly the people that are already in that position somewhat, the closers basically. It's just one person, right? It's our clover.
Yeah.
Yeah, bringing that person up to the same level.
And which step is that?
There's currently, let me see my notes. They're currently here, which is sixteen eighty-five. And to bring them up to say twenty, would put them at step J, right here. Oh, sorry. Step I. Step I, but keep in mind, this is just a two hours a day position. So they're not actually going to be.
Yeah, so what's, what's the net impact of that?
For that particular person?
No, no, for, you're, you're talking about, you're talking about raising people in the, how, how many people are currently in that role? Two?
Oh, we're trying to hire a temporary summer.
Right, but current, current, currently it's two plus, and then this would be one additional?
No. It's currently one person that is on a regular basis currently. And then also the temporary seasonal person for maintenance.
Yeah, so a sixty-five hundred dollar annual impact, so three, roughly three thousand dollars for the balance of the year plus the temporary, which is going to be another, what's that work out to at the hourly or at the twenty-four hours or whatever you were indicating, Tom, for the season?
We put in money for the position.
Yeah, it's all subtracted.
They're already defined through three months salaries.
What's that, what's that? Budgeted that, which is.
We budgeted money, but we haven't been filled the position.
So three fifteen times.
Part of three months.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, so you're, are you, are you suggesting that these two things, one to step increase to step nine, our existing, our existing maintenance employee and then just offer the position that's open for the seasonal, seasonal at that same step nine rate for the hours provided?
Yes.
But, yeah, but the seasonal one would still probably fit into the original total amount of budgeting because there's just not that much of the season left by the time you get some time. Does that make sense?
No, for sure, for sure, because of, because of the miss so far.
Hours a day, how many days a week?
All year. That's her closest part every day.
Every single day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Yes.
Okay. So let's see if we started in June.
Can you scroll back up on this, on the scale, Carrie? So it's, it's step eight, not step nine, is that correct? Or what's the letter?
It's step I, which is step nine. I, I.
Uh.
Right. Step I.
It's step eight, oh, step I is what gets us to twenty? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it would be right here.
So does anyone, if I were to make a motion for that, does anyone have any issues with that?
No.
No, we're all, we're, we're good.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to increase the seasonal maintenance employee annual salary grade four from step C to step I and to proportionally allocate that step I level to the seasonal employee position that's open for 2023.
I'll second that motion.
That was the first part, did you say the seasonal position and then the closing position? Or did you say it the other way, the other way, the closer was first?
Correct.
From this part, the, the second part, from step C to step I. And then, Matt?
Yeah.
So for the seasonal position, are you saying that's step I as well?
Yeah, step, proportionally step I for the hours that are specified.
Trying to capture what we think you were saying before I do that. Do you want to read that back to Matt and make sure that he's, Matt does sound correct? And, and in our words, Matt made a motion to increase the closer position salary from step C to step I and to increase the seasonal maintenance worker employee to step I.
Yeah, I just added the grade, so grade four, step C to step I.
Thank you, yes, thank you, that's important, appreciate that. And I'm going to say, I'm going to say hourly wage rate.
That's fine.
All right, are we ready? Matt made, or excuse me, it has been moved and seconded to increase the closer position hourly wage from grade four, step C. And to increase the seasonal maintenance employee from grade four.
Two.
Oh, to grade four, step I. All those in favor say aye.
Eric aye.
Krista aye.
Jake aye.
And aye.
Jennifer aye, all those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. So walk out of here before it's.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Matt. All right, is there anything further? We've, we've, we've handled all three. Yes, okay. All right, we are adjourned at five thirty-one.